Okay, it being 6:30, I'll call the meeting of the Oregon School District Board of Education to order. It's Monday, October 14th, 2019. We're at the Oregon High School Innovation Center. Can you call the roll?
Ms. Feeney?
Yes.
Ms. Oderico?
Here.
Ms. Flanagan?
Here.
Mr. Pankretz?
Here.
Ms. Bijak?
Here.
Mr. Lebrun?
Here.
Mr. Zak.
President, board has a quorum. I have proof that the meeting has been appropriately noticed under Wisconsin Open Meetings Law. The proof of that notice will be with Ms. Heights if anyone wants to inspect that. On our agenda this evening, as posted, we have a committee of the whole. We're gonna do four presentations, not take action on those at that time. We're gonna get a report from the Boundary Task Force. We're gonna work through an exercise on the naming of Elementary School Number Four, hear from Gina about the calendar proposal, and then we'll adjourn out of the committee of the whole and return back to our regular agenda. We don't have, we have one action item for consideration that would be the calendar, and then from an informational report, a professional development pathways report. So with that, I would need a motion to approve the agenda as posted.
Also moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, posed. Okay, we'll proceed under the agenda as approved. I would need a motion to move into the committee of the whole for purposes of discussing four things: the Boundary Task Force, Elementary School Number Four naming, school start times, and the calendars. Is there a motion to go into the committee of the whole?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, posed. Okay, we're in committee of the whole. We had talked about maybe doing it in a more informal setting without being here, but given the nature of the presentations tonight, and the public nature of them, we thought we needed to make sure that this was on, alive, on video, and that people could hear us with the mics, and that was only gonna be feasible here. So that's why we have our table up here. Just wanna remind everybody that we have more informal rules of proceeding, and so we wanna make sure we enhance discussion. So if you have a question, just, you know, jump in. We're not gonna go formal Roberts Rules, recognize that sort of stuff. Okay? So the first thing that we've got, and then we're gonna have various people move in and out depending on what's up, and we've got an OEA rep that will join us when we talk about the calendar and the school start times as well. So, Task Force, hi. So you control the committee of the whole, so how you wanna proceed is up to you guys, and the feedback and direction will be, you know, at your discretion, so, 'cause I'm not gonna run this show necessarily at any point in time, so go ahead.
All right, well, thank you, everybody. Andy, would you mind pulling up the presentation? So tonight, I'll be representing the work of our OSD Attendance Boundary Task Force, which was about a dozen of OSD employees, parents who are also OSD employees, and our parents in the community. And tonight, joining us here, up here, although there are task members sitting back here, there are also some up here I wanna make sure you know. Cassie Cooley is all the way there to my right, and Mark Rockers, you've met him many times before, and he is available for questions on any of the things that we talk about tonight. And then Erica and I will be talking about the work of the Boundary Task Force. So if we go to our first slide, thank you. A lot of these slides are the ones, also the ones we used when we spoke with our focus groups, because all of you know that because of our work with Mark Rockers, we know that we are projected to grow by 2,000 students in the next 10 years. So, but that is something when we worked with the task forces regarding feedback for our proposal that will be before you tonight, we wanted to make sure that they knew it. That the reason we were looking at boundaries was because of the growth and because of the new school, next slide, Andy, that is currently being built in the northern part of our district, because that is where the majority of our growth will take place. Our growth will take place across all parts of the district, but the vast majority of it is up north. Consequently, we are building a K6 elementary school, and the addition of a new elementary school led to the inevitable conclusion of we are going to need to examine our attendance boundaries and make some decisions as to where people go. So, next slide, we put together our attendance committee. So as I said, we had a wide variety of people, including a bus contractor, in addition to the parents and the other OSD employees, and the committee met eight times since the end of last May. We did a lot of work, and we really relied heavily on Mark Rocker's data and his research to help us check the possibilities associated with all of the attendance outcomes that we, or boundary outcomes we examined. So, as with everything, we started this process with the five values in mind, with our mission in mind, because those are the things that guide us through our work, whatever that work may be. And in this particular case, the work was not only coming up with a recommendation for all of you tonight, but also establishing committee guiding criteria so that we knew that whatever recommendation we came up with, we could run it by our criteria to ensure that it was worthy of further examination. So, the criteria, which you can see on the screen, are the next slide. This actually took us a couple of full meetings to make sure that we felt really strongly about the criteria that we were using. We examined what was used in other school districts, and then we really came back to what was important to us. And the top thing, and I'm sure you're not surprised by this, is consistency with our five values. Whatever option that we put forward to you, we wanted to be sure was consistent with what we believe here in our school district. We also wanted to do something that made sense. We wanted kids to attend the schools close to where they live. There had to be a logic to it. We wanted to set reasonable boundaries, but also maintain a sense of flexibility in the system. We spent a lot of time talking about transportation safety and efficiency, because that is a component of what we are doing. And finally, we also spoke about how the decisions we were making now would contribute to logical subsequent transitions when we move to Phase Two. So all of those things were a part of our consideration as we moved forward with, coming up with some really good options. So, we also spoke about historically how we made placement decisions, because that was something that a lot of the people on the committee needed a little more background in. So, we spoke about the fact that historically we've had very dynamic and flexible boundaries, and this has been beneficial for a number of reasons. And the first, that it allows us to balance class sizes across our district so that the class sizes remain even in a really good number, no matter what elementary school you attend. It also allows us to honor family preferences, which we've always been very flexible and adaptive with our families, and it just promotes a general level of flexibility. So historically, we have really not used tight and stringent boundaries to place people, and there have been positive aspects to that, which I just outlined. But we've also learned that it, that system creates some challenges, too. We all know that there are some transportation challenges associated with it. But we also found out that it can also be somewhat confusing for new families when they come in and they're asked which school they prefer. If you're coming from any other school district, you probably find that to be a really strange question, right? But when you're in Oregon, that's the question that you expect. And then, we also heard from some committee members that making that choice, hello Jasmine, making that choice also could put a little bit of stress on the families, because if they were bringing their first child to kindergarten, they really didn't know which school they should mark as far as what they preferred, and that that process could be somewhat stressful for some people. So we knew that our current system had positives, and it had some challenges. So then, next slide, here is sort of the beginning of what we started to discuss. You will see, first I'll go to the map, and then I'll go to the numbers. We examined about five different options, and I think things really became quite clear to us after we took, we decided that we needed one map to show transportation boundaries, and another map to show, excuse me, attendance boundaries, and another map to discuss transportation. When you tried to put them on one map, it became very confusing for the viewer and wasn't at all helpful. So what you're seeing before you right now is the recommendation as far as boundaries for the three attendance areas. So the yellow, the northern attendance area, the students living within that area would be attending that school. And then the students in the blue, they would be distributed between Prairie View and Netherwood, still allowing for some flexibility in balancing of class sizes by having that little bit of placement flexibility. And then the students who live in the red area are our Brooklyn students. Now, we can talk a little bit more about how we came to this determination and the type of system we'd like to use in placement, because we wanna honor our long tradition of flexibility for families. We believe that's really important, and so we've already designed an exemption process based on where people were placed.
Leslie, in the terms of the demarcation between the colors, is there a road that determines those boundaries, or how is that line chosen?
Between yellow and blue, I believe it's Burn.
Okay.
And then, mm-hmm.
I would be.
And between blue and red, it's a...
Lincoln, Cary Parkway, 138.
And I'm excited about this work, so that gets me talking fast sometimes. So just interrupt. If you want me to stop, if you wanna ask a question right away, or if you wanna wait and think and ask it at the end, whatever works for you is fine for us. So, you might be thinking, boy, that yellow line is further north than I would have expected. And that is because, based off of our work with Mark, we know that if we lowered the yellow line and took it further south, that the school would fill much too quickly. As it is, leaving it there, will still fill it to 630 students by the year 2030. So consequently, we knew that our border for the northern school had to be farther north than maybe we had previously predicted. And the interesting piece is, the first year that we opened that school, we have made some decisions, or some, we'll be making some recommendations regarding how we want to begin to fill it, because some of the developments in the area are just starting to build out. Consequently, we don't wanna fill the school completely with students now, because we know that there are still houses being built. And we'd hate to tell any family who built a home two blocks away from a new school that there is no room for them. Consequently, we would really like to open up some of the lower grades with fewer than the four sections to which the school was designed, so that as students are moving in, we still have some room when the new houses are getting built. So, you can see kindergarten through grade six, we have a desired number of sections, and there's a great amount of flexibility with this, and then the total number of students that currently live there. And when I say live there, I mean students who are actually in yellow and students who are open enrolled along that band, which would be even with or north of yellow. So, you can see that in kindergarten, for the opening of the 2020 school year, there right now would be a projection of 23 students. And that's just by taking 4K numbers and rolling them up. However, you also see that in grade one, there's a projection of 48 students. So whether or not we are opening with two sections or three sections would probably depend on the number of students who fill out the exemption form to go elsewhere, or students who are placed elsewhere and fill out an exemption form to go here. And I think you'll also note, and this is a really important part of the strategy, that RCI right now is, it's getting a little tight on space. We have 635 students at RCI, and it's a school that's built for 600. Consequently, we think that this is an opportunity to provide some relief for RCI in the 2020 school year. And how we could do that is the students who are currently in fourth and will be transitioning to a new school, some of them would be transitioning to RCI, and some of them would be transitioning to the new school in the northern part of the district, because those students who are moving there would only be there two years. There'd be plenty of room in the lower grades for people who are moving in, and it would provide nice relief for RCI in the next couple of years. So we're hoping to actually have between four to five sections of fifth grade, and we'll talk a little bit more about how we might do that in just a moment. And then, going back to probably two to three sections of sixth, because we know there may be some families that do not want their child to have to switch schools to go to fifth grade, switch for sixth grade, and then switch for seventh grade, and we wanna be really mindful of that.
Leslie, I know you're gonna talk about the exemption process later on, but is, in terms of factors that would guide that process, is it set in stone that you wanna keep the sections 4K through four at two to allow for future growth?
We want to be very thoughtful about how many students that we bring up from other parts of the district, because we wanna ensure there's room for the neighborhood that's being built around the school. However, no, there is flexibility in the number of sections. It doesn't have to be two. So right here, these numbers, the 270 students total, excuse me, the 270 students that actually live in the yellow area right now, and the 364 to 413 that we would project as of opening day, the 270 is a slightly different projection from Mark's original projection. He would say 291, and that's because the 270 is students that are currently residing there and just rolling them up one grade, whereas Mark's number, 291, was just a little bit higher because he was also projecting some of the new builds that will be happening in the next year before the school actually opens.
And those builds are likely to have younger kids, is that correct? Is that why we're doing K4 people, which is actually so few now, that's where the kids are gonna be?
Typically, when new families move in, they move in with little kids.
What about open enrollment? So, do we see, do you have any forecast about open enrollment or increased open enrollment, and how we would treat those kids based on kids that are currently in our school district?
Well, our students who are currently open enrolled, as we all know, they are ours. They never have to reapply, they're ours. However, for students who are not in the school district and are open enrolling in, there probably would be fewer spots than in the past. But that is a decision that all of you would be, would be making. And our past practice has been to prioritize siblings of children who are already in the district, but once again, that would be something that we would be talking about.
Looks from, when we're talking, make sure you hit the red button so we can make sure we're, you're good, Leslie, so that we can project out. And then if you guys are talking to the table, hand the mic down. We're talking about then 130 students that will be coming from blue, potentially?
Yes. Are you talking about the fifth grade group and the sixth grade group?
Yeah, I'm just looking, I'm just figuring 400, roughly 400 total students in the school in the 270 projection from yellow. I'm getting approximately 130. Those you're thinking are coming from the blue, and primarily those would be fifth graders?
Right, fifth grade in the fall of 2020. And I will get to that in just a minute, how we were thinking about accomplishing that. So if we go to the next slide, you'll see the map again. And basically, our solution would be that every K6 student is assigned to a school, and that there would be a process to handle the assignment exemption requests. And we have a draft form that we're working on, and that I would lead the committee at the district office to work with the exemption requests as they came in. And that we'd also have some simplified bus zones. We would have bus zones that, there is a map that shows if you live north of this line, we would transport you all the way to Fitchburg if that's, you were granted a spot there. And if you lived this line and south, we would transport you all the way to Brooklyn if that is where you were placed or where you requested an exemption so that you could be placed. So, all of these pieces that are part of our solution overview, we felt really aligned with the criteria that we set out, that we wanted to ensure that kids attended schools close to where they lived, that we were really living out our five values, and that we were thinking about safety, efficiency, and flexibility as we made the decisions. So if we go to the next one, attendance area assignments. Our K6 students will be assigned a school by the attendance area in which they live. We would honor the current placements of our K4 students who were in blue and red. So there might be some Netherwood students living in red, they can stay in, they can stay in Netherwood, and there might be some Prairie View students living in red, that sort of thing, and they can, they can stay there. We'll honor current placements. And as far as fifth grade, we are taking some, we have several possible solutions as to how to have our fifth grade students assigned to RCI or the school in the northern part of our district. And we have some options, and these options will be discussed more thoroughly in the next couple of weeks. And one option might be seeking volunteers, who in the current fourth grade wants to go up to the northern school. Or perhaps, looking at the line between yellow and blue and moving south and inviting students as we move south until we have a good number and we are filled. And there's also the option of perhaps assigning by school, saying something like, all of the fourth graders from Netherwood go to the new school, that sort of thing, because we know how important it is for students to be able to attend with a buddy. And, yes, go ahead, Courtney.
I have a question about honoring current placement of K4 students with regards to the yellow area. So, there are a large majority of kids there that currently go to probably Netherwood and Prairie View. What if they want to stay in Netherwood and Prairie View? Because I'm assuming they are included in the yellow 2020 projection numbers, so the assumption is that they're all gonna move?
And that goes to the exemption process, which is the next slide, because you are correct. We would be assigning the students who live in yellow to the new school, and they would be getting a letter this school year saying, welcome to school, and you will get to pick that name, or our students will get to pick that name. However, we really want to maintain that flexibility we've been discussing, so the people living in yellow, just like the people living in blue and red, can fill out an exemption form for their placement if they so choose. And we will be giving priority to fourth graders who fill, whose families fill out the exemption form because they want to stay at their elementary for their last year. We understand that, and we would honor that. Some might be really excited to go to a new school, and that might be the best, because then they get to stay there for four, five, six, and it lessens their transition. But there might be other students whose families believe that it's best for them to stay in that one school for that one last year. So we would honor those exemption requests, prioritize those, as would we sixth grade exemption requests.
Yeah, definitely.
Correct, yep. So, the district will attempt to honor as many preferences as possible, assuming there is space, A, because we believe it's really good for our families to honor the fact that there may be unusual circumstances, and also because it's really how we've always done things. We've always allowed families to have a strong voice in the process. And then the school assignment change request form with the exemption form will be available to all families who ask for it. And the next page is transportation.
Before we wander into transportation, under this plan, do we know what the census is gonna be for the two elementary, the other three elementaries and the middle, or Rome Corners?
Brooklyn will remain relatively untouched, unless there are students who live in the red who fill out an exemption form to go somewhere else. Otherwise, Brooklyn's numbers will stay pretty much the same.
And what is that now, approximately?
Four sixty-five, something along that line.
Okay, and then what does Prairie View and Netherwood have?
I believe Prairie, Dawn's right here, so she can pipe up if I'm incorrect, but Prairie View is just under 450, and I believe that Netherwood right now is at 585.
What would those go to, though, if, under the new one?
Well, Brooklyn would stay about the same, and then everyone, most of the kids, the vast 99% of the students in yellow are Prairie View or Netherwood. So as we took away approximately 150 students, they'd be fairly evenly distributed between Prairie View and Netherwood.
So that approximately leaves us with what at those?
Actually, about 200 students, but yes.
In Prairie?
So about at least 100 from each school, so we'd go down by quite a bit.
So what would that leave their total population at?
Well, this is an estimate, because we don't know who will be exempted, but that would put Netherwood below 500, and it would put Prairie View below 400.
Okay. The reason I'm asking that is because we know Brooklyn has been crowded, and I was wondering whether this plan provides some relief switching some of that population back to Prairie View and Netherwood, nor to balance them out and to relieve some of the pressure at Brooklyn?
Right now, I would say there isn't any pressure at Brooklyn at the moment. I think they feel it when they start to get up to about 500.
Okay.
So they're okay at the moment. But yes, I think that we would always have some, I think we'll be able to do a lot of things with the exemption request forms. So I'm not anticipating a problem at Brooklyn. There isn't a lot of growth building happening down there.
Okay.
Just taking off on what Leslie just said, there isn't a lot of new housing development, so the kids that are there are aging without a lot of new kids replacing them. So, we felt, I felt, that there's gonna be a natural decrease in the area you see in red in terms of elementary enrollment.
And then we hope to decrease Rome Corners by about 150. So that would take them below 500, which is a really good size for the building. Okay. Then the transportation routes, we're trying to be very, very simplified, and this is not a route, excuse me, this is transportation eligibility, okay? So if you look at the map that has the red line, and that, you can, I hope you can see it, I can't see it on my black and white copy here, but anyone living south of the red line would be eligible for transportation to Brooklyn. And then the opposite map, anyone living north of the green line is eligible for transportation to the school in the northern part of our district. So, we really are working to ensure we can provide transportation for families whenever we possibly can, and still maintain an efficient system.
So you used the distinction between transportation route and transportation eligibility. I'm assuming the eligibility is that if they're filling out an exemption request, and they live south of the yellow line and they wanna go up to school four, that we would not provide transportation for them?
Correct.
Conversely, if they live north of the red line and wanted to go down to Brooklyn, we would not provide transportation. They could ask for that exemption, it's just, they wouldn't be eligible for it?
That's exactly it. And, you know, we've also been really flexible with families in the sense that oftentimes, if families can take their child to an existing bus route and there is room on the bus, sometimes we've even been able to provide transportation, but it wouldn't be the same door-to-door service that we provide elsewhere.
So here's a process question. Gina, you know, I think we're gonna be asked in two weeks to approve the attendance boundary plan. For the transportation plan, are we gonna have to change policy in terms of eligibility? I don't know, I have not looked at that.
I will double-check it with Andy, but I don't believe so, because we have a pretty liberal transportation policy as it is. So, but we will double-check it.
Because I'm assuming that in addition to approving the school attendance boundaries, you're gonna want us to approve formally the transportation eligibility line?
Yes, that's part of it.
Okay.
But we can, we can certainly... But we can certainly be flexible with that piece. We just wanted to have a really strong estimate so that we could be clear about who is eligible and who is not.
You're gonna wanna know that because that's gonna be part of your exemption process. The more criteria that you're gonna have to guide that exemption process, the better off you're gonna be. So then in case you get challenges, people aren't gonna say you're being arbitrary in terms of who you're exempting in and exempting out. I guess that's my one caveat with the exemption process, that you get those criteria established. I like the flexibility, but also some degree of markers helps in case of making the decisions and responding to complaints.
No, I, we absolutely agree, as a matter of fact, that's something the committee spoke about a lot. How to be flexible, but also how to make decisions in a thoughtful way that was really clear to people. So our next, our next slide is really the focus group slide. We invited, we solicited names from our principals and invited groups of parents in. And we presented the plan to them and asked them, how do you feel about this? What makes sense? What doesn't make sense to you? How do you think we should be communicating this information to families? And we met with some just fantastic families who were really helpful. And I think one of the big takeaways, Erica and I were at all of them together, was that they thought the plan was very logical, that they understood it, and that they appreciated the flexibility. And they really wanted to have this information communicated to people in a variety of ways. This is a lot to send in a letter. This would need multiple communication mediums so that people could maybe read it, but perhaps also watch it and rewind it when something didn't make sense to them. And also be able to call in and get a rapid answer to a question. All of those things we think are really important as we go about presenting what will be a change for many families. So now, we are open for questions. We have been all along, but this would be a really good place for them.
Dr. Bergstrom, I'm wondering about staffing with the numbers of classes you have in the new, projected for the new school. So small, relatively small numbers of grade level classes in the younger ages. How does that affect, I'll call it support staff or specials, things like that?
Well, we know that we have projected to be able to do things like hire one art teacher. One general music teacher. We have made those provisions already as part of the staffing plan. So we also know that their first year, they may be teaching far more fifth grade than they ever expected. You know, that sort of thing. So I think that we will be hiring for the 1.0 FTE in those situations. And their days may look different the first two years than they will for the rest of operation.
I was interested in the type of plans that you considered but didn't accept. And I don't need a detail through of them. This looks like you were just, you took a logical east-west cut line and divided the district into three. What kind of other models were out there that you considered? And didn't think were viable?
One of our popular models was, we actually had five zones. There was a northern zone, there was a flex zone for going north or going south. Then there was the central zone, then the flex zone, and then the Brooklyn zone. And it was really what we started with, it was the first option to come up. And we, we all found a lot of good things about that particular option. But it was an option that gave some people more choices than others. And so we decided to table that option and continue going. We also looked at the idea of what would happen if the boundaries were extremely fixed. And we didn't do the flexibility, and what sort of scenario planning could we move forward with from there? We also, we also, as I mentioned, it became very clear where we needed to draw the boundaries to ensure we weren't overfilling the new school too quickly. And then we tried to superimpose transportation possibilities on top of that. And it just became very unclear for anybody who was trying to understand where their child would go to school and how might they get there. So, really, this particular banded piece became logical to us very quickly. It was more about how to represent it in a way that was logical and understandable for parents. But Jasmine Hammers was on the committee, as was Cassie Cooley, and Erica and Mark. If any of you have one that you remember distinctly and wanna talk about?
We understand that the committee or the task force has a consensus that this is the model you wanted to bring forward. And that was a strong consensus, and you also got that from your focus groups as well, is that right?
That's correct.
So how do you, how do you anticipate us proceeding with this information? Because, do we come back in two weeks and vote on this? What type of community education piece will there be prior to that, if any? What do you think's the best route to take for us to move forward?
Well, we don't want to do a lot of community education until we know for certain that this is the plan that the board would like to support. Once we know that, then Erica and I, and actually the whole team of us at the district office have been putting together timelines for communication, for education, for possible venues for the dissemination of information for families. So all of that is in the works with a very organized and logical sort of string of to-do lists. But we don't wanna do any of that until we know that all of you feel like this is the plan to support.
I just have a question about the focus groups. And do you, I mean, how many people came to the focus groups? Did you have representatives from each scenario? I guess if you didn't, can we seek out those scenarios? I guess that's my question.
We had a variety of, we have families from all scenarios recommended to us. 4K parents, fifth grade parents, parents that had children in all of the schools. When all was said and done, we probably had a larger representation from families in yellow. And that's probably because they had a strong inclination that they would be changing schools, and they wanted to learn more about it. And so I think that was actually really helpful for us because the plan impacts them the most. And they had children who were in the middle school and RCI and elementary, 4K even. So we had all sorts of scenarios from that angle. And we invited a couple of dozen, and we ended up with, I'd say seventeen, eighteen families.
Leslie, I have a question about 4K. Do we have 4K, a 4K site in the yellow area? Or will there be one coming?
The developer in Teravessa is very supportive of getting daycare in the area, which very well may include 4K because we would be very eager to partner with anyone who was showing interest in that area. And it's a little early to be able to talk too much more about that, but we feel very strongly that we'll be able to create a good partnership.
So that means presumably there's an area that would be zoned for daycare. And then I guess my question is, assuming this will probably be in the Oregon Observer, a report from tonight's meeting. For people who don't read the Observer, how could they find out about this before the board votes in two weeks?
Well, we were discussing how to send information out to parents post this conversation. So we could send it out via email. We've also spoken about being able to set up some stations, you know, similar to what we've done for referendums in the past. So we could invite people in and give them information in, in small chunks so that you can have conversations with people. Because oftentimes it's really what they need.
So are you looking for the board to give you like, well, this looks pretty good kind of reaction? Before you go to that next step?
Yes.
Before an official vote?
Yes.
Thank you. I just have a question about if these new boundaries change the length of time for the bus trip. I know that's obviously a topic for parents on how long their children ride the bus. So I'm just curious if these boundaries take that into account and even if they, what impact they may have, good or bad, on the length of time that children might be on the bus within those zones?
Well, we don't have all of the information on bus routes and the exact times. However, one of the things we heard from the focus groups was concern over how much time students who were living in yellow spent on buses to get back to Oregon. And so clearly we'll be able to improve that. So we're excited about being able to improve that for families. And other than that, we don't expect there to be a significant time difference in people getting to and from school.
Thank you.
I know that there's already some conversations about a 4K or several 4K in the area. Will we have room, even if it's in an interim time, to host a 4K at our school for the first couple of years? If, if there isn't a facility ready when those 4K students are ready?
I think there would always be some classroom space in those first two years. It really depends on how fast the area build goes up. We were hoping to have that classroom space as flexibility in case, not in case, for when these homes are built and students are registered. But could we do something in the interim that would be for us to explore?
I'm curious about how the board feels about the next steps in this. I'm comfortable with the process that we've taken with a task force that has community representation, that has explored this and come up with these ideas, and with having the task force or the focus groups review this. The question becomes, is the board comfortable approving this formally as the plan in two weeks? Or whether we wanna give a soft yes? And then plan on a formal yes sometime in November to see what feedback we get off, get at that point? I'm just interested in folks' thoughts on it.
It really is a chicken or the egg. You know, they're waiting for our direction, and we're kind of waiting for the group's direction on this plan, if this is the plan. So it is a chicken or the egg, and the soft yes is something that I would be interested in floating out there so that they felt comfortable having that communication and getting feedback without a final decision.
Leslie, in the focus groups, was it kind of unanimous support for this idea? Were there some outliers? And if so, were they, you know, particularly vocal? Do you feel they represented perhaps a voice that's out there in the community?
Well, to a person, we didn't have anyone who said, this makes no sense, or why are you doing this? We had nothing of that. We did learn some, we did learn that for some people, the really wonderful thing is our families love their schools. They love their schools. And even the opportunity to go to a brand-new building, it wasn't necessarily something that was making people eager to leave the schools they love. And I think that's a sign of a strong system, right? Where kids and families feel connected to their schools. So some people were really excited about the potential change. Some people felt a little anxious about it. They didn't think that it was illogical or unfair. They just felt concerned about how their child would feel about moving schools. And I think that's a really normal response. And one of the things we learned is that we should really help, help parents or support them in having some of those conversations. Because if you're a second grader, chances are you really, really love your school. And the idea of going to a new one might not be the happiest thought you've had. And so how do we help parents have those conversations with their kids so that the kids feel a little bit better about making a change? And then what can we do as a system to support the kids and make sure they feel good about having a change in their life like that?
Well, you addressed some of that angst by having as one of your criteria that you're not gonna require any student to change their school. I mean, so that goes away. I mean, anytime you change attendance boundaries, it creates a lot of issues. But you take most of that angst away if people who are in a building aren't being forced to move to a different building.
Yes, we talked about that quite a bit as a group.
I think that would be the thing that we would need to figure out, and concern is too strong of a word. But to get going down this process so parents know where they are placed. And then if there's not a, oh, we're really excited about it, how we're gonna handle that and work through it so we have the numbers that we need at the school. So I think, you know, I'm potentially in favor of a soft yes, but I would really like to see us start moving down this timeline so people can start processing. And you all can also get through what you need to get through to figure out what families are going where.
Yeah, and I, I'm comfortable too. I mean, there's been a lot of work done. You're always gonna have some folks who aren't gonna be totally happy with this. But to me, the fact that your group has processed all this over a long period of time and focus group, that gives me some comfort to say that I'd like to do a hard yes sooner rather than later. On it, I mean, I think we can go around tonight and say, has anybody got any problems with this on the board? Without voting, and you can kind of work with that as a soft yes. And plan unless something really unusual happens for us to take a hard yes in two weeks. I think that's sufficient time. I mean, I'm assuming you do some communication, Erica, between, you know, it looks like the board's in favor of this one, or there was positive feedback on the plan, and they're gonna vote whether to approve it or not at the next meeting. How are people feeling on that?
I would imagine that's going to take some time though, and so what's going to change in the next two weeks? If it's just about communicating back, and we feel comfortable with a firm yes today? That's right, it's not on the agenda.
And we can invite people to come for public comment, right? I mean, that's the role of what we do with a lot of different things, is that we vote on it and we publicize it. And maybe we have to do a little more publicizing, but let people know that this is the time for public comment because the board is gonna vote on it.
Are people feeling comfortable with the plan from what you've heard? Or any really things that raise red flags for anybody on the board?
No red flags for me, I think it's very sensible. And when I go back to your guiding criteria, I didn't see anything that I really questioned about the plan with respect to the guiding criteria. For me, I'm interested in the timeline, I guess the timeline of the exemption requests. And specifically how that would impact open enrollment requests for next year. That's just something that's in the back of my mind. I don't, I don't understand how those two things are gonna coincide with how we would approve either of those. But otherwise, I'm in support of taking this to the next step.
So to answer your open enrollment question, remember, we have two opportunities for open enrollment because the board sets the space in January. And traditionally, we've been conservative because once we set the space, we can then go back and raise it in June, but we can't lower it. So I would anticipate that we would have the same operation style that in January we would set our spaces, maybe conservatively, but then we could see where the number is. And spring is gonna be a great time to check development and housing, and then we can always raise it in June. So we do have those two opportunities.
Is there a rule of thumb that we've been able to use that we would expect X number of open enrollment? I mean, are we talking about ten or fifteen people, or are we talking about forty people?
And we do have that historical data that we can bring in January as well. Typically, our numbers have been higher at the different change points. So kindergarten, fifth grade, seventh grade, ninth grade, which makes sense.
Tim, it's been ten or less at the elementary level. And there were some years where we closed it for an entire grade. So one of the considerations that we talked about when we had one of our district office meetings, there is a danger at setting it at zero. Because the moment you set our open enrollment available seats at zero, other community members that are not residents will turn Oregon that are not residents will turn Oregon off as a consideration. And remember, many of the families are applying to one, two, in some cases, three different schools. I would anticipate if we had to make a decision today, it's going to be in that less than 10 range for K-6. We have significant flexibility at the high school level because of available seats in the various classes that we offer. So that likely will be as it's been historically. And remember, the goal is the matriculation of the kids. The high schoolers will matriculate faster than some of our big enrollment levels at the elementary. They won't even get to the high school. While the students we're currently accepting will have already graduated. So there are, there are just a number of moving parts with it. But like we did last year, actually for the last several years, we've been very conservative on open enrollment. And we have been closed at, with special education students, for goodness, must be seven, eight years now at least. So, and that's a, that's an important, that's an important piece. Because that's an area where we have less flexibility over offering a program at higher costs for our, for our kids.
Any red flags, any over here? Okay. I think what you're hearing is of positive on this. And so Brian and I will work on putting this on the agenda as a hard yes vote for this plan in two weeks. One thing you could bring is like, assuming that happens, what the timeline looks like? Okay? And board need anything else from Leslie?
No, I just wanted to say thank you to the task force for, really, that's a, that's a tough job. And, you know, sometimes you make some people angry when you make change like that. But I think that was really, sorry. Mark, thank you, too, for your guidance as well. Really important.
It really helps us when we have, you know, a broad-based group do all the groundwork for us and assemble the data and then we get to just look at it and try to understand it. Thank you, community members, for helping us out.
I really can't say enough about the task force and the members. People were very committed to this and they really thought about it. And, you know, in between sessions, they thought about it. And our discussions were rich. And so their input really made all the difference.
Thank you. So now we'll transition into the second part of our committee, the whole work, and that's the naming of school four. Yeah, we don't want to, school four. I didn't see that as one of the options. School four.
I am really, really excited to call it something other than the fourth elementary school.
Yeah.
So I've been excited for tonight.
And Erica, you're going to lead this and then I think Brian's going to assist then because we have an exercise for us to get us to the point where we have to go.
Yep, I will tee it up and then Dr. Bustler will take over. So real quick here, go ahead, Andy.
Dots tonight?
You are lucky to be able to do dots tonight. So just a really quick review of the process and how we got to where we are tonight. So our timeline, we, oh, thank you. Our timeline started out in August 28th. We opened up the process for people to submit names. Anyone in the community was able to submit names. And we held it open for about a month. And here we are for tonight. We will hopefully be narrowing it down to a small list of options. And then ultimately, the students will take the options that you come up with and the students will vote on the names. So again, just, you have all this in your packets. I believe it was in the board packet. But criteria for consideration, aligning with the mission, of course, that's in everything that we do, adhering to the school board policy, and that's going to be coming up on the next page I can remind you of. Represents the geographical area, endures over time without controversy, doesn't be confused with other regional names, translates well in other languages, lends itself to an appropriate acronym, and is easily pronounced by elementary students. Policy 616 was approved by you recently, I believe, right? Last year? So it basically, the three main points summarized. It can be named after a geographical location. It can be named after an inanimate object of significance to the area and after a historical person who has exemplary character, who has not been living for at least 20 years. So we had a process for submissions and we accepted them both electronically and via paper. What you see is a paper, the example of the paper form that was distributed. And we had a handful of paper submissions, but most were electronic. And we also, in the process, both on our website and on the forum, we were very clear about the considerations that we'd be doing. And we asked people to say, "Tell us the name, but also tell us why you think that's a great name." So here, this is really amazing. We had a total of 204 names that people submitted for the process. So I thought that was pretty awesome with a month for people to submit. We got submissions from students, parents, community members all across the district. I mentioned mostly online. A few were excluded, 26, because they didn't meet the criteria, one of the ones that I just discussed. Thirty-eight of them were duplicate names. So for the purposes of tonight, we still retained all the information about why those names were great individually. But in terms of unique names, there will be 140 unique names for you to look at tonight and go through the process in. And so here we have for tonight's goal, and you have the materials. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bustler now.
Board members, what you have in your packet and in the report that Erica put together, you have all the names. And again, what an impressive list of names that came to the district. We didn't take a poll or a guesstimate on how many. I was thinking we'd have over 100, and to get over 200 is really quite amazing. And obviously, the duplicate names we've all put together and you saw in the packet when there was a name, and I'll use an example, Nine Springs or Nine Springs Elementary School, that was very popular. And we tried to put all of that rationale together underneath it. I think what we'd like to do at sort of the end, but we're not at the end yet, is use an affinity diagram process. And I'll just give you a little reminder, when we use an affinity diagram process, some people think of it as a vote. I think of it as a prioritization. And everyone will have, what I'd like to do is provide you with five different dots and you can place the dots on one of the 140 items. Now, there's always someone that says, "What if I really like a name and I want to put all five dots on it?" I suppose technically you can do it. I think it would, I think it would be, I think it would be wiser to not put more than two dots on one name if you really like that name. There are all kinds of theories about affinity diagram. At the end of the day, it all tends to work itself out. I've had a couple of conversations with Steve and I'm not sure where you've really landed how many names you would like to give the students. I could see you giving the students two names. I could see you giving the students sort of up to five names. I think at a certain point, it's too many names to provide. So think of somewhere between two and five. And one of the values, well, one of the benefits of using affinity diagram is after you do that, we can look and see if there's sort of a natural cluster of names. We might find there's only three. Or we might find that there's four or five and maybe we have to do it, do the process one, one more time. But before we get to the point of actually doing the affinity process, Erica has spent a significant amount of time doing research. I think we may have set a record with the size of the board packet that we sent to you, totaling almost 500 pages. I can tell you I've read a lot and you see the one picture on the screen from the city of Fitchburg in terms of historical information. And it is amazing what historical societies will keep. But I thought before we did anything with the affinity diagram process, what might be most important is if you have questions about any of the names, obviously, before you do any prioritization, we would like to make sure that you have any of those questions answered. So I know you have paper copies and electronic copies. If you just want to walk through a couple of pages and we can do it silently and you can just read and if you have a question on a particular name, toss it out and I'm certain Erica will have an answer for it.
Let's go back to process for a minute, though. We can't take action tonight in terms of how many are going to be referred out. So I was thinking that we do the affinity process or the dot exercise to narrow the field. We see what we've got and come back in two weeks then and have a conversation about how many of that field we, we want. And if there's any more information we need about the name.
So maybe we're cutting to 20 or 25 tonight, maybe?
It just depends on what the dot shows. I mean, the dots might show we have six or five that are really popular. We can say, let's, we want to look at those to see whether we want to move five or two of them on, as opposed to making that final cut decision tonight. No. I'm not either. Okay. We'll know better when we do the dots, how we want to go.
Troy?
Question for others, is five dots enough for people? Do we want to go higher than that since we're at a point where we're just kind of prioritizing or clearing?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of hard to go from 40 to five. I mean, I don't know.
Courtney, do you want more dots?
No.
Normally, the way the process works, if you're looking to get to a certain number, that's usually the number of dots you use. You could use seven. But I, I think you're in that two to, I think you're in that two to five range.
All right. Tim's ready to go.
Yeah, we are.
Are you going to put them all in one?
We are ready, yeah, we are ready to, to give you dots, but we want to make sure if there's any, if you have any questions about the names, we know you studied it since the packet's been out. But if you have questions, we're happy to answer any of those questions.
I don't have questions per se. I just want to say that a lot of these names were really thoughtful. And I think that the reasons given were detailed and interesting. And while we may not choose some of those really detailed, great ideas, they were still really good ideas. And I, I want that to be communicated back to all of our name submitters because there were some really terrific, thoughtful, provocative ideas. None, you know, nothing was off the table and they were all really, they're all valid. So it's going to be hard to choose, I think.
So are you handing us?
Yeah. Board members, any, any questions? Any questions on the names? Otherwise, you are going to get five dots. And there's no time limit.
Other than there's a Packer game that's ongoing? Not that that's important.
It's very helpful for you to provide that names that are already taken by another community. Does it sound familiar?
Yeah, yeah.
They're losing three to nothing in the first. If you guys are ready, we have some dots. I even have some green and gold ones. Tim? There you go.
Wow, awesome.
Get a little bit of both.
Thank you.
You can pick your color.
I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kidding.
You're not going to want to check this card.
I still like Flubber elementary.
Nice. Don't even start. Don't even go there.
Chris, are you taking away all my fun?
Yes, I am.
This is why you didn't get seven.
That's why I didn't get seven?
Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one. Nice. It's a great piece. Yeah, yeah, right. I still like Flubber elements for that one.[922.12]
From the Vision Steering Committee, we've had conversations at administrative team. We've landed on this as a starting point for school start times. We still haven't done our school engagement process yet. I have a memo ready to go to all staff at the conclusion of tonight's meeting to bring them up to speed because the, we know this will get printed in the Oregon Observer this week. We're also going to provide some updated information to parents. But again, we are at the beginning of this journey. We are not at the end of the journey, but we are interested in your, in your feedback on it. With growth brings opportunity, and you can see some words there. Change is sort of a, it's a, it's a challenging word. We, we attempted to base our decision on our five values and what we've known from research in terms of sleep patterns, looking at the whole child. We're also sensitive to parent concerns and staff concerns about how long does bus duty take? We're having students dropped off at school and they're waiting at school, either at the beginning of the day or at the end of the day. So, we also know that we've used busing and transportation to balance our class sizes. We've attempted to have reasonable class sizes at all of our schools. Now that we're going to four elementary schools, we need to continue that theory that we've used with balancing class sizes, and Leslie and the task force have encompassed that into their recommendations. In terms of our approach, you might have seen this before. It's the approach that we've used back with the 2014 referendum. The first thing we attempted to do was responsibly plan, and then go out and listen to community members and school staff, and then ultimately finalize our plan. We are at the responsibly planned session right now. Although, we're interested in the board's feedback, but we also know this is a multi-step process that's going to take a little time to get through. In terms of the Vision Steering Committee work, many of you will remember those early seven or 7:15 or 7:30 a.m. meetings, and one of the topics that came up at Vision Steering was adolescent sleep patterns and what implications that has for school start times and transportation. We have actually been trying to crack that nut for a few years. I looked back at our data and we started that conversation in November of 2016. Since that time, we know there have been a few other Dane County districts that have made some adjustments to their school start times, which doesn't mean we need to make that same adjustment, but school start time adjustments are very common and they have been made in the district, or in Dane County. I would also say, we don't want to change school start times often. That is a decision we'd like to change on a less than frequent basis. I'm not sure how long it's been, although the school start times haven't, when RCI was, when RCI was open. I know they hadn't changed in the last decade plus since I've been here. That's not uncommon. Districts get into patterns and they don't change. Usually, the driving force for changing school start times is the opening of another school. And I've had that experience in other communities where a district went from one middle school to two middle schools, and that, or added an elementary school into the mix. That really causes the need for looking at school start times. Erica found this information from the American Academy of Pediatrics, a reasonably well-known group, and in a nutshell, middle, middle and high schools should start at 8:30 or later. And that was really consistent with the conversations that we had at the Vision Steering Committee. How do we, how do we flip that start time for elementary earlier, middle and high school later? Again, if you think of it in terms of a puzzle, and like many of you know, I love puzzles. At the center of our puzzle is the adolescent sleep patterns, and items that go around the puzzle include balancing class sizes. That is a super important item for parents. It's a super important item for best educational practices, as well as, as well as for our, for our teachers and our paraprofessionals. We also know, for those of you that have been on the board for a few years, we've had some challenges with improving bus route length, and Andy and Mark have been working on a plan with our consultant. I don't remember the name of the firm, but I do remember the consultant. His first name is Griffin, and one of the recommendations that he's made to us is, we can narrow that bus wait time if we have that 45-minute pivot between when elementary schools start and when high school starts. And then obviously, the school, the student school schedule is, is an important part of this puzzle, too. This is a quick summary of where we currently are, and you see, we're close in times at the elementary, but not exact. We have a bit of a delay at RCI, and then we're close in times, but not exact, at the middle school and, and high school. And you've probably noticed the student day column. The student day column has quite a bit of variety. When we looked at the 2020-21 school year, we tried to narrow and make things more consistent. So, we're sending a consistent message to parents and students, and you'll also notice the student day looks different. We've tried to balance out the student day. That doesn't, and we haven't, we haven't framed that for, for teachers. One of the things we've talked about administratively is that the school leadership teams need to take a look at that student day and fair out what some of those opportunities are with a longer school day. You'd see it's longer at, at the elementary level. A concern that we've heard over the last couple of years happens to deal with lunchtime. And lunchtime being either super fast at the elementary, or a little too long at the high school level. So, the, we'd like a recommendation from our school leadership teams on what that's, how that student daytime, with it being consistent, what that would look like down, down the I think we did it in less than 10 slides. I didn't count it. Am I, oh, it was eight. Perfect. Again, we're not wired in tonight for a super-long presentation. We're interested in gathering your initial thoughts. We're interested in gathering if you think we've missed some things, as I'm dusting your memory off from our Vision Steering Committee conversation from, from several years ago. So, I will stop and see if you have some feedback for Erica and me, and we will bring that back to our administrative team.
Just a, a quick, kind of immediate reaction or question to the change in start time for OMS. And I, I guess I don't know how many parents are doing this, but I would presume that some parents who are choosing to drop their students off at the school when they leave for work are doing so earlier than the school day begins. So, just wondering, what sort of plan might be in place for that kind of an impact to families? Because I would expect that that may be an impact to some families, depending. So, I don't, obviously, this is preliminary, as you've mentioned, so, but that's a question that would come to mind on, on that change.
Yeah, we've had a conversation that irregardless of our start and end times, particularly, I'll go with our start, some families are going to drop their children off earlier. And we're going to need to increase some of our paraprofessional time in the morning to accommodate that. We're not going to have students standing out in the rain. When, when parents are dropping off kids, I can remember a few years ago, when Jim Pliner was the principal at the middle school, it seemed like we had the entire middle school in the gymnasium before school starts, and we had staffing there to, to help and, and to oversee that. I would anticipate, as we move through a change, we're going to need some additional staffing in the morning, because parents are going to drop their children off as they're heading out Highway 14 to their, their place of employment. So, we're aware of that. We don't have all of those, you know, details figured out, but we're not going to be a closed campus where young people can't come in. And I know many of you that have had high school-aged children, or have high school-aged children now. You know, some young people start showing up at about 6:15 every day in the commons. We anticipate that to continue. One of the conversations at the Vision Steering Committee was, we need to be really cautious about not scheduling high school activities before school starts, because we could easily fill that time that we're supposed to have extra sleep with practices for co-curricular activities. There have been conversations about a zero hour or an additional class, and if we're going to go with a later start, we really want to protect and make sure that we're not eating that up with other activities.
I would say, one, a thing addressing that, too, is, I don't know if, I think we have to think about programming, though. We've got a fitness center, so it would not be mandatory activities or club-based, but opportunities that is programming for kids. That could be physical fitness. I think the other thing is, as I look at these times, I mean, I think this is good, but we also have to think about breakfast. A lot of kids are not eating breakfast, and, and now some are a little bit earlier. And I know Sarah, with our new food service, she was at the wellness committee. She's amazing. I think the board would love to hear from her, but I think there are some really important things that she can impact in terms of getting our kids breakfast, because we know that if kids are hungry, they're not going to learn.
Brian, you mentioned that the elementary schools have a quick lunchtime, and the middle school and high schools have a protracted lunchtime. And is it as a result of that, though, there's a longer day for those elementary school kids and a shorter day for those high school and middle school kids? I mean, is one a result of the other? To give elementary school more time at lunchtime?
Like, in the, in the future, yes. That would be a possible choice. Right now, it is so tight at the elementary with the six-hour-and-50-minute time, that to provide additional time for lunch would really be hard.
And then on the middle school, and more on the high school side of things with that longer lunch period, it seems, at least when our kids were going to school, it's just long enough to think you can go to Stoughton for lunch, but not quite long enough to actually do it.
We'd end that as someone who'd go to Culvers in Oregon, right? I, I will, I will address that super dicey issue, because that, that is, that is something that we're going to hear feedback on, and it, it's balancing out a concern. We certainly don't want young people racing to get out of the community in order to get lunch. But if we were to modify the high school lunch schedule by 15 minutes, and I know that because Jim's been talking about it, that would narrow down the opportunity for young people to go to other communities to get lunch. On the positive side to that, we, we also have a brand-new high school food service program with a brand-new food service director that is likely going to take our program in a direction that it, that's new. That's what happens when you have someone new with fresh eyes from, from a large school district. So, that's certainly a possibility. I am super sensitive. I still have a few bumps and bruises from the conversations a decade ago plus, when we talked about closing campus for freshmen. And I, I heard an "oh, gosh." So, I, I think some of us have a few bumps and bruises for that, from that. What we're trying not to, and we know there's some value for students having some off-campus time so they get away from school, but certainly, from a school safety standpoint, we do not want young people or older folks, you know, racing to get lunch during a really tight timeframe. But I know that's an issue that we're going to hear about.
I would like to hear what Laura says, because you're here at the table, and it's our opportunity to hear your input.
Recognizing that it's going to come back out to you guys, too, yeah, and if there are any issues, that red flag issues that we need to think about, too.
Well, I certainly appreciate the, the opportunity to be at the table, and also the question about the middle school, because being there, that's, of course, was one of our big ones. We have kids right now who are dropped off before 7:00, and we provide supervision from 7:00 until 7:45. But what is that going to look like if they're dropped off at 7:00 and we're not starting till 8:30? And certainly, I think at the high school, the supervision isn't quite as much of an issue as it would be for us. So, that's a, that's a concern that I would have. The other question that comes up is the fact that at the middle school and the high school, kids are released early some days for sports. In fact, we had an email that tomorrow, we have kids being released at 2:15 for a sporting event. So, that means they're already missing an hour. So, what is that going to look like in the new schedule? They're going to be missing an hour and a half. Certainly, things that we can work through, but, you know, those are concerns, right? So, how do we, how do we handle those things? And then I think another big question we have with the elementary schools, those teachers right now have an hour and 10 minutes outside of the student contact day that they use for collaboration, working together, taking care of meetings. So, if their contact time increases, what does that look like? And I suspect, you know, we talked about looking at the possibility of increasing lunch or recess, things like that, but just being really conscientious and mindful about what does that look like? Because I think our elementary teachers are often, they have a very different pace of their day than middle and high school teachers, and I say that having been an elementary school teacher for a long time. So, I think we just want to make sure that we're very mindful about what that looks like for them, and don't just dump, you know, an extra half an hour of contact time on them without making a plan and being thoughtful about how we do that. So, those are some of the immediate kind of questions and concerns that we have right now.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura. And I would just emphasize one of Laura's points about the, the contact time. I mean, when I look at this schedule, I really like that all schools have the same length of a student day in terms of the staff and equity for staff between schools. But what, what is flagging to me is that extra 25 minutes for the elementary teachers. And like, as you said, Laura, is that, does that mean additional contact time, or how are we going to handle that? Because that, and, and to your point about the pace of the day, it is, it is a different pace for the, the, those younger teachers.
And I think, just to, to kind of explain that a little bit, for those who maybe aren't educators, in the elementary world, those kids are your kids, right? You are responsible for them all the time, and things happen all the time that change your schedule. In a middle school, when that bell rings, the kids walk out the door, right? And, and I am not responsible for them. And so, although we have planning time built in for our elementary teachers, I think there's this much more often, I'll say, eaten up by other things, right? And not out of anybody's fault, it's just, it's just how elementary school works. And so, I think we just want to be really mindful of, of what those plans are going to be, and make sure that we're protecting them. I will also say, I have students who are very excited about this whole thing. Not that they have seen this or know this, but we read an article about student start times. I have a club that is currently trying to write a letter to all of you to advocate for this, so they'll be super excited.
Yeah, Brian articulated how this all started, but this solves a couple of problems. One, from an operational standpoint, we've been really trying to work on that bus route issue and the wait time for a long time, and this, this reduces the wait time for kids or the length of time that kids are on the bus. And one of the questions that I had for, for Brian is that even though we're starting them at 7:45, they're going, at the elementary school, they're going earlier, 15 to 20 minutes earlier. That may actually reduce the amount of time that they're on the bus and shorten, shorten that time. So, even though they're starting early, that doesn't mean that we're bumping back the time when they have to get up and get on a bus.
Yeah, so is that, do we have that type of information that would, that would give us an idea of what, what that average change would be as far as bus ride time? Or, I mean, that would be a good piece of information to assist helping to educate and inform not only the board, but the community at large on the benefit of this change in start times.
So, we've been working on that. This Thursday, we're going to have our first draft of the bus routes. We kind of needed the information that we talked about earlier this, this evening about where we're going to bus and where we're not going to bus to start that process. So, we got a start on it probably about a month ago or so, and hopefully, we should have some information starting this Thursday.
But I know when we talked as a Vision Steering Committee, that it would, any plan that you used, you needed a 45-minute gap to run the buses on a double route, and if you did that, that way, you were shorting, shortening the time that, under our current system, that the kids were on the bus, so they weren't having to get up as early of that, so.
I, I would, I know there will be support in the community for that.
As we have, before you got on the board, we were getting emails on that. And board members, one of the questions that you will likely get is, why not just buy extra buses, and we could all start at the same time, and that would eliminate having different start times? The answer to that is, that's possible, but that is super expensive, because each bus route costs in that, depending on length, $80,000 to $100,000 range. And previous boards and previous administrations in the district have said, we're not going to do that. We're going to focus more money into the classroom on reasonable class sizes and into instruction, as opposed to paying for transportation. So, that's, that's a question I get a lot from, from parents. Why can't we just do it all at the same time? And when we get three or four minutes to talk through it, there's usually an, "Oh, yes, I see that. I'd rather spend the money on, on the classroom." And to borrow Tim's phrase, this is a little, it may be a couple of chickens and a couple of eggs here, in terms of the school's starting time, in terms of the boundary, and then in terms of overlaying a transportation system that's going to match what we perceive as the best boundaries and the best start times. The other thing, in addition to that operational piece, was, you know, taking to mind Rick, Jim Rickleball's book on the Five Lovers. We just don't want to make a structural change to make a structural change necessarily, although this helps in one sense, but the medical evidence is pretty clear that bumping that start time back at the middle and high school level carries with it some health and educational benefits, too, so. Tim?
What other schools in Dane County are starting at 8:30, at the middle school and high school level? Do you know offhand?
I think their high school's at 8:30. And they believe Manona Grove. We have a summary, we have a summary of those data, and I can, I can provide those, provide that to the board. Yes. We are not, we, we would not be the lone Dane County school district doing this.
I just want to say that I was at the Vision Steering Committee meetings when we talked at length about the health benefits of doing this. And with all the challenges our young people seem to have these days, and the concern about mental health issues that we're seeing, it seems like it's pretty compelling to me that this could really have some benefits. I do think that issue, you brought up, Laura, about kids turning up at middle school so early is definitely a concern, and I guess one of my questions is, these kids could be taking the bus, right? So, we don't know exactly why parents are dropping them off, whether, because they want to make sure that the kids actually get to school, or to have time with kids in the car. I'm not sure, but maybe we need to explore that a little bit more about encouraging parents to have kids take the bus so that they're getting to school at a appropriate time and getting the benefits of extra sleep that we hope to provide.
Okay. Go ahead.
I guess, just to kind of piggyback on that, I would really love us, would love to see some data or some conversations with families, and look at this through an equity lens, too, because I think there are reasons why kids are being dropped off early, and I really would love to see a programming plan associated with this or addressing some of those equity concerns, and, and so, families know that they're not on their own with this change, that we've thought through it, and that we've got some answers about things that we can help them with.
To follow up on that, I was also thinking that with some of our families, I suspect that older siblings provide childcare, and I'm sure that that's going to be a question, concern that you'll hear when this goes forward. And one other thought I had, just going back to the increased, the increased time, especially for our elementary folks, I hope that we look closely at the recess option, because talking about, you know, what research says and what's best for kids, they need to move, right? And I think we try to implement that in our day, even like at RCI and OMS, but I think that would be, this would be a wonderful opportunity to do that. And so, I guess my question to that is, when deciding what those extra minutes are, in the case of the middle school and the high school, the decreased minutes, is that going to be a building-level decision, a board decision? Like, what does that look like? How are those decisions made?
I'm happy to jump in on that. First pass, we're still in the responsibly planned phase, and part of that is having building principals work with school leadership teams to flesh out those details. I think ultimately, and we've gone back and forth, I've sort of teased the board a little bit, in terms of, is this on my card or is this on your card? Administratively, we're happy to come up with a final recommendation, and obviously, something this big, we're going to share with the board. And we'd be happy to have the board, you know, make the final decision. We're okay if the board views this as an operational item, and we do it administratively. Because here's the key point. At the end of the day, our goal is to make as many people as we possibly can happy and accepting of the change. Now, we'd like to shoot for 101%, but I have a feeling we might not hit 101%. We might be a little bit south of that. But again, the goal is to make, make this a cultural change in our community, so people understand, why would we change those start times at the elementary? Why would we change them at, at the middle and high school? So, this is a, this is more of a marathon, and, and not a one-day, one-time conversation.
And the, the plan is, though, that we would have these in place for the start of next school year, because that dovetails in with the transportation plan for opening elementary school number four. I haven't been dead 20 years yet. So would argue.
So, in, in, you know, in the meantime, we welcome, you know, we welcome the conversation, board members' feedback that you get from community members. Erica and I are working on something to send out to parents yet this week. We also want to send something out to school staff tonight, so they don't get surprised by reading it in the Oregon Observer on Wednesday. And by getting this conversation started, that's going to, it's going to create conversations and questions that we haven't heard of yet. We're also going to put a frequently asked questions page on, on the website, so we can get ahead of it and provide as much information. And in the meantime, if you get a question from a parent, just route it to Steve or route it to me, and we are happy to, to respond to them. And I guess my initial inclination is that moving the start times, the, just the, the start times for each of the buildings is probably going to be a board decision to, to do that, but the operational, how that takes place, and what are you going to do with the minutes, and, you know, what about the program? All the questions, the implementation questions are for you guys to do, but I, off the top of my head, I think that's a board decision from a recommendation from the, from the administration. But we can talk further about that. Okay. Last item, school calendar. And you're swapping out?
I'm swapping out.
And you guys know Nate Johnson. Hi, Nate.
Okay, so, we have a purple, which you'll be looking at when you get back into the board session, and then everyone should have a calendar at their place. So, in terms of the calendar for 2020-21, we followed a very similar process that we have in the past. We surveyed parents and staff regarding the calendar. We had 838 survey responses, which is very typical. I've been, this is my eighth calendar that I've worked on, and we've always had over 800 respondents, so that's pretty exciting. 83% of our respondents. Eighty-three percent of our respondents had children in the district and about forty-three percent of our staff responded, so we feel like we have good solid data regarding the calendar. As is very typical, is our community is very split on their feelings about the calendar. We did receive two hundred comments, so that tells you that this is something that people are very interested in. And in the purple that I prepared, I gave you really the highlights from the survey, but you do have the survey and all of the comments in the packet and is public on the web for everyone to see. In terms of what we asked this year, we usually don't have a lot of flexibility in our calendar when you look at the parameters that we have in putting it together. And the board looked at the parameters last May in terms of, so we followed a very traditional structure. One thing that we continue to work on educating people, and I put it right in the email about the survey, is that state law provides that the earliest we can start is September one. But we always have interest in starting before then, and that is something that WASB does work really hard to educate our legislators about, but that is the one piece of our calendar we're not able to change. So, two thousand twenty-one is a little bit interesting because September first is before Labor Day, so I have received calls about that, but recommend that we start September one because we just need those instructional days. In terms of the, so the PD days in August become a little bit tricky because we're starting before Labor Day, so in talking with the, with Laura and the OEA about that, there I understand the executive committee met earlier and they're comfortable with the recommendation of having the PD days in August on the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh. That gives teachers time to prepare in their classroom if that's what they would like to do. Going through the calendar, and I should say, this calendar is a hybrid of the draft calendars A and B that were sent out to families. So, what we do is look at the survey responses and, and I do tell all the parents and staff that the calendar could be a hybrid depending on their feedback, so this isn't calendar A or B in the survey, it is a mix of both based on their responses. So, we typically have two professional development days in October, you'll see those on the calendar, and that often coincides with professional development on a statewide basis for our music teachers as well as physical education. So, we try to work around those state conferences. The three days at Thanksgiving has been a tradition in Oregon that our families really appreciate, having that Wednesday before Thanksgiving off. We did talk about if parents or staff would prefer on going to school the Wednesday before Thanksgiving in order to give a two-week winter break, and more of our respondents preferred that we have off that day and give up a few days at winter break, so that is something that is a result of the survey responses. So, you can see there, we recommend winter breaks start on December third and we come back to school on January fourth. In terms of February, we have a PD recommendation on February fifteenth, that's a federal holiday, so some of our families prefer that we try to structure around federal holidays or the university calendar. And then our spring break, the preferred week was March twenty-ninth for our families. As HR directors, we try to coordinate as much as we can with area schools and UW-Madison, and so we try to go the last week in March where we can so that we have similar spring breaks. So, that is the week that the HR directors are looking at as well as UW-Madison has that as spring break as well. We have a professional development day August twenty-third, we try to do a mix of Mondays and Fridays because our families tell us that's what they prefer. That day in April, we feel gives us time to have meaningful PD and also time to reflect and engage our students after that date. And then, as is customary, we built in three snow days in this calendar, so hoping to get out June ninth with a half day, but with the caveat that school could end earlier or later depending on the number of snow days that we have. We did survey this year on the last day of school being a half day or a full day, because if you remember, last year we had a full day due to inclement weather. So, I wanted to survey on that this year and it was very interesting because our families were really split on that, both third preferred a half day, a third preferred a full day, and a third had no preference. And so, really thinking that since we didn't have a critical mass of folks that wanted to move our tradition, my recommendation is to keep that as a half day, as well as if we do have a very snowy winter, it is nice to have that flexibility to add minutes if we need to on that day. What questions do you have for me on the calendar?
Did you say how many snow days you had factored in?
Yes, we build in three.
Okay.
And so, last year was the first year we had to use more than that, so I am hoping that this year we're back on track. The other item that we talked about in, with Nate here, I know he may have thought, some thoughts on this, is that last year we tried having seniors out early, and then when we had to approve the calendar, for this year, we didn't, didn't know how that would go, so we kept that in last year's calendar. So, with two thousand twenty-one, administration is continuing that recommendation now that we know how it worked. Jim couldn't be here tonight, but he did, I have talked with him about this, and he did give me some talking points for your consideration that he would like to continue having the seniors out a little bit early. From his lens, it allowed just more time to help students be on track for graduation because they could identify a little bit earlier who maybe wasn't on track, gave some time for makeup incompletes or makeup maybe finals that were missed. So, he felt that it was better in the student's interest to continue that. He does, we did have some challenges with assessments, and so that is something the high school administration team is committed to working with, with the teacher, particularly those classes that might have had juniors and seniors. And one of the things that they're thinking about is really encouraging teachers that it doesn't have to be a final exam, that it could be more project-based or other types of assessments. So, I know Jim is open to having those conversations with the teachers at the high school, but would like the board to continue having the seniors be out a little bit early.
I'd like to get Nate's perspective. I know last year we, it came down to that question, you know, that we, we just decided we would support whatever Nate and his team wanted to do, and I know it was, it was a leap, and so I'd like to get your perspective.
Yeah, I will say, kind of going back historically to that conversation about last year's calendar, we definitely, we were between that rock and the hard place that the administration was set on, we've got to have this date for graduation, and we really couldn't get our days and minutes in by that point, so it was just kind of, at that point, a no-brainer that for that year, the only answer and the only solution was for the seniors to be done earlier than the rest of the students. From the union's perspective, just one background thing that we'd like to share is that we'd really appreciate if we could have a collaborative process from the beginning of this, just so that, like, we really feel like, walking in at this point, we're lobbing some grenades into the process here at the end and saying, you know what, okay, wait, stop a second, we've got objections, as opposed to being able to own some decisions on the earlier end there. From our perspective, we get that there's often about ten to fifteen students who are looking at struggling to graduate when it comes down to the end there. One of the notable things is most of those students have been identified at least a month earlier as, at risk. And so then, looking at not taking alternative measures, I mean, we could look at taking alternative measures sooner rather than after they haven't passed courses, like having to have this end date and then, oh, we knew they were at risk and they didn't pass. There are options in terms of how to handle that, and like, certainly I get that the flexibility of that window there for that ten to fifteen students, that makes a difference, but we've got these maybe fifteen students and we're balancing that against the learning experience of somewhere in the ballpark of five hundred students. That, we talk about classes mixed with juniors and seniors, that's not a small amount. I will admit that both from the building level as well as from our union level, we have not taken the time to collect data and really survey and follow up on what happened last year. So, I'm talking anecdotally from things that I do know at this point, which is, being in the Science Department, I've talked at length with the Science Department about this. I've also touched base with a couple of things that are happening and just to have some perspective on some of the other things, but a lot of the anecdotes that I can share are from the Science Department in specific. We look at science courses and math courses, and essentially there are no courses that are exclusively seniors except for maybe BC calculus and math, that we have mixed grade levels in almost all courses. So, we're not looking at, okay, if you're teaching a senior course, you schedule things out to be appropriate for the seniors. We're looking at, in a lot of areas, you're making your plan for your seniors, you're making your plan for your underclassmen who aren't graduating out, which leads to a lot of disruption. Some courses decided to just cut their content a week earlier, so they had to cut a week of content from their course, which included, some of those courses were as high as three-quarters juniors in them, but if they had a predominance enough of seniors in there, trying to make smaller alternate arrangements for that becomes a very complicating factor. So, there's a lot to factor into this in terms of the educational impacts of having the seniors graduate early, and it's not an aspect of a large proportion of them are in senior-only classes. We have a very mixed and, on the level of personalization, we've given students a lot of freedom to chart their courses. There was a lot of disruption, and we had some students on their last two days of school taking as many as five exams over two days, where each day they had to be ready for five exams, and they were taking half of each of those exams on each of those days. I don't want it to get into the merits of exams versus projects here, but I think there's a value in some of the exams, and I don't think that our calendar would be the best way to drive those educational decisions. So, I guess the bottom line for me is, I don't have enough information in hand, and I don't think collectively we have enough information in hand to know all the educational impacts on both directions on this, and I think it would merit gathering more information, I think it would merit having more conversations about what that end of school year looks like for seniors.
Sure, so if you look at the calendar, and this one is a little bit different because graduation would be June thirteenth, so this one gives us a little more space because the way it's recommended, June fourth will be the last day for seniors and June ninth for K-11, but that's with three snow days built in. So, let's say we didn't have any snow days, everybody would be out June fourth. Alternatively, if we had to add days, we still have time to do that before graduation, so let's say we added two more days, seniors would go until June eighth potentially if we needed them to, or they could be out June fourth. You know, that would be a decision point that the board would need to look at if seniors make up those days or not, legally they don't need to. Last year, I think we felt that it was so tight with graduation that we kept the seniors being out on the day they were planned to be out because otherwise we wouldn't have had time to score exams and know who was ready to graduate. So, we've got a little more room in this calendar, they could potentially be out on the same day depending on if we have a nice winter or not. Additionally, in terms of, Jim did leave me some feedback that he talked about last year when the seniors were out early, that he received no negative feedback from staff about the early graduation, that he was working with staff that had ninth to eleventh graders, and he did not receive any complaints about that. And so, I think really, when Nate raised this issue, I would say Jim was a little bit taken by surprise, and I know he's had conversations with you Nate, since you have raised it and you two have talked about that. He did talk about that we would be the only school in the conference that does not graduate early seniors other than Watertown, so the good news is that we have other schools that we can talk to to see how we can make our process even better. So, it's not as though we're the only school to grapple with this, in fact, we're sort of the outlier for not doing this. And he did say that he does give a lot of deference to teachers about what that, what that assessment period looks like, so he does give voice and choice to the teachers about how, if they want to do an exam or projects or what they choose to do. So, he would defer to the teacher about what they think is best for their classroom in terms of that assessment. And he just really did want to emphasize that it was really helpful in terms of being able to verify graduation, graduation status and allowing those who were struggling to have extra time to complete their coursework so that they could graduate.
I guess when we, we first did this, and correct me if I'm wrong, is this was part of policy committee, when we floated the calendar for this, and Tim, you, you were on the committee too, so, but I thought that we had said that we wanted a dedicated review of that where the groups came together, and so I guess I'm just wondering is, if it doesn't really impact this calendar, if this calendar can be approved except for that, but I think we really need some dedicated conversation about what went well, what didn't go well, and I would love for us to make the decision that's based on data with students, not some anecdote or some conjecture, and let us know what teachers did that did it successfully, who the issues were, that really that was a problem in their class, and, and I guess some organized strategy about it instead of this or that or maybe or not. I just think that that was part of our original intent when we approved this as a policy committee, that there would be a dedicated discussion about that piece.
Yes, and that's a great point, we wouldn't, I don't see a need for the board to make that decision tonight if they choose not to do that, I think really what parents really want to know from us is, when's the first day of school and what do the vacation times look like?
Calendar tonight later on, to reserve that question for you guys on the senior one and have, have the high school staff and Jim and you work on that issue?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
Absolutely.
Okay, cool. Any other dialogue? Great, thanks for your input Nate. All right. Made it through the committee whole, so we need a motion to adjourn from the committee of the whole?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post. All right, we're back to our regular consent calendar. Katie, can you get a score for us?
Thirteen, seven.
Thirteen, seven. So, back, when I first joined the board, Dave Williams was the president, and we would schedule our school board meeting to start like at five-thirty on the night that Packers were on Monday Night Football. So, just, yeah. I would take feedback, but anyway. Consent calendar, is there any item that any board member wishes to have removed from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll abstain on the minutes, I was not at one of the meeting minutes.
I'm of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just planning to go with a second. I will note that we have a number of board donations that are subject to the motion. Megan McGary with a hundred and fifty dollars donating for orchestra rental fees for students in need. The Oregon Swim Club donated four hundred dollars for the splash pad. LaPete donated school supplies for district students. The Rotary Club donated a hundred and forty-seven dollars for the splash pad. Holy Mother of Constellation Church donated a hundred and fifty dollars for school supplies. Pure Integrity Homes donated a thousand dollars for a scholarship, and Robert Steinberg and Cynthia Mealy donated a hundred dollars for students in need of clothing. So, we appreciate those donations and the support that all those folks and organizations have provided to the district. I don't think we have any contracts on there, so all in favor signify by saying aye to approve the items on the consent calendar. Aye, post, we're approved. Communications from the public, board policy one eighty oh four has established the opportunity for the public to address the board, is there anybody registered this night, tonight? Going once? Going twice? We're done. Informational items, D O E A report, anything, you guys? Okay, thanks for coming tonight and joining us for the committee of the whole. Student report, hi Jenna. I had coffee with Jenna and Cubby last week to talk about their role, and, and why don't you introduce yourself and what you're going to do and where you're headed? You were the homecoming queen, weren't you?
Yes, I was.
Hey, I saw your picture in the front of the Observer.
Thank you.
And you waved, do you have the princess wave on, there you go. Very good.
All right, I'm Jenna Sharkis, I am the co-student body president at the
I am the co-student body president at the high school with Cubby Vandermaus, as previously said. I will be sitting in during the school board meetings for this first semester. And Cubby Vandermaus will take over for second semester. And I'll come as he needs and for me as well for the semester. And I'm just hoping to learn from all of you here and give any input that I can.
And you're going to go where next year, do you know?
Hopefully, I've applied to Madison in Minnesota. And Madison is my top choice at this point.
And what are you going to study?
Business, not specifically anything at this point.
Cool. Well, welcome. Glad you're with us. And as I said earlier, and as we talked about at coffee, you're going to play a role and a role out of the voting process for the school name. So we'll talk more about that in the next couple of weeks.
All right, sounds good.
Anybody have anything you want to share with Jenna? Else we'll move on. All right. Do we know whether the soccer team won tonight or not? Okay. What? Packers kicked a field goal before half. Okay, that takes us to action items. The 2020-2021 school calendar. We have a proposal in front of us, a recommendation from Gina, with the understanding that if we accept that, that they would keep open the dialogue regarding the last day for seniors and graduation. So we'd need a motion to approve the calendar as presented to us tonight with that understanding. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Would you take the roll, please?
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Lebrun?
Yes.
Ms. Feeney?
Yes.
Ms. Oderico?
Yes.
Mr. Pankritz?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes. We have a calendar subject to further conversation. And we can communicate that to our parents. Thanks for your work, Gina, on that. And it's not easy. And we've talked about, in a perfect world, this isn't the type of schedule that we'd have. But given the constraints that we have by law and culture, it's what we have very few options in terms of how we manipulate that day, so.
It is nice that we have a whole week before Labor Day to get started. I mean, it gives us a lot more flexibility for that calendar.
Okay. Item F, information items, professional development pathways report. Leslie, is that you?
John.
Okay. Floor is yours.
All right, we'll just... Well, it says on, there we go. Okay, I just had to get really close. We'll wait for this to come up hopefully. As an introduction for anybody who doesn't know, we've established professional development pathways for all as part of the teacher compensation plan. That was one of the things we did. And so this is sort of the update. So we'll review where we've been and also talk about where we're going to go in the future. And it should be fairly short, unless you have extensive questions. So this is the end of the second year. June 30th was the end of the second year of the Teacher Comp Professional Learning Pathway Plan. We have three pathways. So new educators have their own pathway that they go through because that is a significant year of learning to be new to the profession or new to us. And then we have two other ones. We have highly effective practices, which are based on, well, we'll talk about it more later, but this is something that we chose years ago as the focus being on having sustained, ongoing learning of professional skills, instead of having it be something that changed every year. And so that is significant. And that's based largely on the research that John Hattie has done on what those effective practices are. The other one is educational equity. We've been working for the last few years with the National Equity Project. And that's been significant. We have equity teams in each of our buildings. We had a district equity leadership team where we learned from National Equity Project how to do a lot of introspection and reflection about our own, you know, our own background, our own culture, our own bias, before rolling that out into action points. And woven through all of these is the idea of personalized learning and a whole child emphasis. Because obviously, those are both values that the board has and had, and also high priorities. And so those do not have their own pathway that's separate from the others because those really do need to be embodied in everything we do. So we didn't want to have those be something that appeared to be separate. So don't worry that, you know, we don't have a whole child emphasis or don't worry that we're not abandoning personalized learning. Neither of those is true. Those are just, you see elements of those in everything else that we do. Next slide, please. So examples of highly effective practices. Well, first, the four practices that we've highlighted are clarity through the use of learning targets. This is basically saying both teachers and students should be very clear about what they're expected to learn or be able to do. As you might expect, knowing what you're supposed to do makes it much more likely that you'll be able to do it. And there's much research that bears that out. Effective feedback is another one. Basically, how to give students input on how they're doing, knowing where they are, want, need to go, and knowing where they are at so that they can make choices about what they're going to do next. The next one is formative assessment. As the board knows from the Assessment for Student Achievement Paper in 2010, there's a big difference between summative assessment, formative assessment. And so formative assessment is one of those that has a really high effect size based on the data for improving student learning. And then the last one is goal setting. And, you know, it's hard to talk about any of these individually because they all go so closely together. You can't really know where you're going without having set a goal. You can't really give feedback on something unless you know, unless you've done some formative assessment to see where people are at. And so they all work together really in conjunction, which is why these are the ones, also because they all have really high effect sizes. That's why these have been chosen. Some of the examples of highly effective practices are, Leslie and I co-teach the Foundations of Highly Effective Practices course that we've had many teachers go through either during the school day or as sort of a blended course. And then the instructional coaches at the schools do follow-up courses that focus real specifically on one of these highly effective practices. So after the overview as sort of a prereq, then people can dive in a little more deeply on those. UW Math Equity Cohort. The UW-Madison School of Education has year-long professional learning courses specifically about math instruction through an equity lens, where they, and the feedback from that has been great because it talks about how the teachers who participate see their students more as people, as they're designing instruction, which goes back to that whole child emphasis. The Greater Madison Writing Project is also through the University of Wisconsin, but obviously with an emphasis on writing practices. And that's part of the National Writing Project. And AIW stands for Authentic Intellectual Work. And this is something that they're doing at the high school, which is super helpful for, because it provides a structure for people to look at the types of tasks that they're asking the students to do and then evaluating those to look at how, well, authentic they are, how relevant and how rigorous they are. And that's led by Bruce King and Laura Lang, who are professors at UW-Madison. And they continue to work with us with some groups that meet, I think, every two weeks at the high school, before school or after school to go and look at student work. So that's a very regularly meeting, ongoing process that teachers go through. Next slide. So personalized learning. A couple notes on personalized learning. One is that the whole idea of personalized learning is growing and adapting. And an important thing to inform you of is that there's been sort of a terminology change, which should be no surprise in education because we keep on changing the names of things. But this is one that even CISA One has adopted. So personalized learning is becoming replaced with the term of learner-centered practices. And so we're still personalizing, but we're doing it through the instruction that we provide to students through using those highly effective practices, which by their nature are going to be individual when you do formative assessment for a student. And then also, we're personalizing by providing access through the equitable allocation of resources. And we're personalizing the learning through culturally responsive teaching. So those are all examples of the way that we're personalizing, but you may not hear the words as often, partly because they sort of, the meaning has been kind of diffused as everybody's jumped on the bandwagon. And so we want to be pretty specific about what we're talking about. And personalized learning was never the goal in itself. So personalized learning was always to empower learners to own their own learning and to have that sense of agency. And so that's really what the learner-centered practices and learner-centered instruction does. And some people call it learner-centered learning.
Yeah, that really dovetails cleaner with Rick of all, the pie bladders.
Yeah, it very much does. Yeah, so even the Institute for Personalized Learning at CISA One, they're not going to change their name, but they are kind of changing their terminology. And so their current assessment process talks about looking at learner-centered practices in teachers' practices. So for equity, some examples of what we've been doing here. There's the, oh, Andy, you can go to the next slide, sorry. The Critical Consciousness Institutes. We've had many teachers go through these, provided by two teachers from, or two, well, I guess they're administrators from Middleton. So done that. Justified Anger Coalition is actually sponsored by the Nehemiah Corporation, which is out of Madison. And they've provided some in-service and learning opportunities, like an incomplete integration seminar, where Gloria Ladsen Billings spoke and a bunch of us participated in that. Teaching tolerance. Actually, they're a national organization and they provide the social justice standards. And so we've had people go to training on that so that we actually have standards for social justice that we can use in our teaching. And also, we've had a lot of people do the Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain book by Zaretta Hammond, which is a really fascinating book based on neuroscience and being culturally responsive as a teacher to the cultures of the students who you have. So it's a fascinating, it's a fascinating read. I encourage you to read it. It's really interesting. Next slide. One thing, this is sort of a, not, I guess not foreshadowing, but this is not a report on last year. This is something we're doing this year. We're partnering with the Nehemiah Group out of Madison. They have some professional development opportunities and some professional services that we are going to partner with them on to help us more effectively work with the families who have students who are underrepresented with us. Some of the things they do, they provide facilitated learning sessions for staff. So kind of our own professional development. They also will provide co-facilitation of a K-12 parent group at the high school. They have, they already have a group that's meeting. It's like the Minority Student Union Group. And they are working with that. But there's been some feedback that we'd like to open that up to a larger group. And this is a way to do it for the whole district. And they can help us with that, just the facilitation of that. They can also do a community forum for us, which is facilitated. And that's something that they have some expertise in. They have some background. They're very community-oriented. And so that's another thing that we feel like we could use their expertise in through the community partnership. And it has the, also the benefit that the vice president of it happens to be an Oregon parent. So we already have some community connections with them. And I'm going to turn it over to Leslie to talk about the new teacher strand.
So our new educators, when they start with us, they have a first-year plan that is pretty well scripted out to help them understand everything they need to know to be a really effective educator in Oregon. And of course, that's differentiated because there are some people coming to us who are brand-new. This is their very first teaching job. And there are some people coming to us when they've been teaching somewhere else for 20 years. So there are some components of the new educator pathway that are required for all and some that are differentiated based on their experience and what they did before they became an Oregon educator. But for the most part, they all attend new educator orientation. And that is about 24 hours of their pathway right there. So that takes up quite a bit of their beginning time. And they're with us for, as I said, 24 hours, but it really is spread out over four days. And then, all of our new teachers, unless they've worked out something different with their principal because they have a different area of passion or interest they want to pursue, we're offering something called the Optimal Learning Environment Class. It's based off a research-based framework from the New Teacher Center. And you've heard of our work with Dane County New Teacher Project over the years. The Dane County New Teacher Project is basically the local version of the New Teacher Project, which is a national organization. And they have done research regarding all the effective components of a classroom. And it's referred to as the Optimal Learning Environment, or OLE. Interestingly, it aligns up beautifully with our five values. As a matter of fact, we could take the components of OLE and put our values on the headings, and it would all make sense. So it's really nice that way. But it's also great to have a research-based tool that we can formulate all of our first-year teaching instruction on. And that course is taught by Stacy Sargent, a first-grade teacher at Netherwood, in addition to our new mentor, Cindy Headstrom. And I'll talk a little bit about that in just a minute. Most of the courses that are taught for our new educators are taught by our coaches and our mentor. But their experience isn't all necessarily about courses that they're taking. And that's where we're getting into where things are just starting to change and evolve. So we had a full-release mentor who was concentrating primarily on new-to-the-profession first-year students or educators, brand-new educators. Well, the state changed the requirements regarding what is an effective mentoring program. And they said we had to provide trained mentors for people in years one, two, and three of their profession. We were also learning over time that people who are coming to us from other districts, they need more support perhaps than we were offering them. And we were, we were making some assumptions because they had experience, but that didn't mean that perhaps they didn't need a higher level of support with our curricular demands, et cetera. So the coaches and Colleen Christensen, before her very recent retirement, formed a team about a year ago to put together what we like to refer to as a continuum of supports for educators who are new to the school district. And that would include being able to create a program that would provide mentorship for all three of your first years in addition to support for people who are new to us. We knew our full-release mentor could not do that. That's way too much. So we applied for and received a grant to have all of our coaches trained through Dane County New Teacher Project as mentors. So now, our full-release mentor and our coaches have all been assigned people who are new to the profession or people who are in year two or year three. That way, we have a larger group of people who are trained to meet the needs of those new to the profession. And we can utilize really effective practices such as coaching cycles as part of the mentorship process. So we're really excited about this change. And we are meeting monthly to monitor the process because for the coaches, it's everything they used to do, and now they're also mentoring. So that is really a shift in their responsibilities. And we're monitoring how that goes. And if it goes well this year, then we think we would do a more complete blend of mentoring and coaching and also train our new mentor, Cindy Headstrom, in coaching practices so that the whole team would be trained in both. And the biggest difference between the two is that mentoring simply places more emphasis on the developmental needs of those brand-new to the profession. Otherwise, the tools and the strategies are well-aligned and practically identical. For our work with the whole child, next one. He's right on it. Last year, as part of the Department of Justice Grant, we had to have a minimum of three hours of trauma-sensitive schools training for every full-time employee. So while we already had a couple of hundred people who had taken the full eight hours of trauma-sensitive schools, we have now added on to that. And every other full-time person has taken a minimum of three hours of training in that area. We also are growing our trained teams for collaborative problem-solving. We also are growing our trained teams for collaborative problem-solving. You've heard of that as part of the work that Rachel Hansen has been doing with the research of Ross Green. So that is now, we're extending the trained team to be including our elementaries. So Rachel is working on a training plan for groups on all of, at all of those schools. And we have the onward book study, which is about cultivating emotional resilience in ourselves as educators. And that has been so popular, it is being, as book studies, is being facilitated by our social-emotional learning coaches, social workers, and our instructional coaches. It was the PLC book for all coaches last year. And we have over 200 staff members in this book study right now. So it has the potential to be, to have a lot of impact, because we know this is a very rewarding and very challenging profession, and we want to really support people as they build up their own emotional resilience and tackling some of the very heavy things that teachers need to do every day. So for a work with whole child is, one of the exciting things is that because of the social workers who are covering several buildings, but also our social-emotional learning coaches, due to that, we're gaining some real cohesiveness in these whole-child supports. For example, this year, all three elementary schools are offering the same social-emotional lessons to their students. And that's all being coordinated through the social-emotional learning coach. PBIS is gaining a sense of cohesion in all of the areas due to this, as is the collaborative problem-solving. So that is definitely one positive, or several positive things, coming from the whole-child offerings and the people who are offering them. Here's an example of one educator in our district and how this person spent their 40 hours of additional professional development last year. You see, it was a National Association of Gifted Children Conference, and because across Wisconsin there are fewer substitutes available, a lot of conferences are taking place on the weekends. There's a lot of Friday night and Saturday conferences, which is an interesting development. A large portion of our educators attended a screening of the movie The Hate U Give, which is a really popular book that students at the high school and middle school are reading. And so when the movie came out, it was a powerful story, and a couple hundred of us attended together in a theater in Pittsburgh. This person also actually co-facilitated a class called Social-Emotional Learning at OHS. They attended a seven-and-a-half-hour session on building global communities, a conversation around immigration, nine-and-a-half hours at a conference on diverse and resilient LGBTQ students, and two-and-a-half hours on helping students apply for the university.
Here's another person who focused more on highly effective practices, and so there are a lot of the same things here. But what I think is interesting is, you know, this person, like many, went way above their 40 hours of required training because there are so many things that are offered that are really useful. So this person, in addition to taking the foundations of highly effective practices, and then the extended classes that go in-depth on feedback and learning targets, they also went to trauma-sensitive schools, which obviously was mandated by the Department of Justice Grant, but also youth mental health first aid, a functional training workshop, and the Hate U Give screening, which is more along the equity lines, and UW-Madison Badger Best Practices workshop. So there's a lot of, there's some stuff that's content-specific, some things that are, you know, still about equity. So people are really going above and beyond in most cases and taking more than the, you know, just the required 40 hours. And I think that speaks to both the professionalism of teachers, but also that they're being, you know, they're not just focusing narrowly on one thing, they see the connections and are interested in a lot of these different aspects.
And then here's an example of someone who went narrow and deep, and that has just as much value. It's one of our teachers who spent all 40 hours working with Greater Madison Writing Project. It was an in-depth summer experience, followed by monthly three-hour evening meetings, all about the writing process. And that particular, the Greater Madison Writing Project experience, has had a significant impact on a number of our teachers and the way they think about teaching writing. And then, this person did an additional 11 hours for Every Teacher a Leader, because that happened in June, and a lot of people were excited about something they had done already this year and had a project planned coming up. And that's when they used the Every Teacher a Leader possibility to give themselves time as a team to talk about what they wanted to do based on their new learning.
So looking ahead, basically, for 1920, we're continuing on this philosophical approach that we've had for the last three years because it's worked really well, and people like consistency. So we still have our areas of focus, we're not really changing those at this point. I mean, we haven't solved equity, and we're not all perfect in our practices, so we're going to keep on learning about those. And generally, people have really liked that, rather than education that has a tendency to sort of like swing as a pendulum and say, oh, here's the cool thing this year, and then people think, well, I'll just wait this out, and there'll be something different next year. We've decided that the things that are really important take time, and so we're going to stick with those. We're also trying to do this personalized approach because there are hundreds of opportunities that teachers can choose from for their professional growth. So we're kind of modeling what we ask other people to do by saying, let's customize it by interest and by whatever your needs are. We're developing the internal capacity of teachers because like the Every Teacher a Leader Summit that we held is developing the leadership capabilities of people and has an ongoing development portion. So we're not just, it's developing people into becoming catalysts in whatever aspect they serve in. So we know that professional development, to be effective, has to be job-embedded, which is why in the calendar, we have like one professional development day each month, because you have to have those things that are embedded, that you can learn, that you can implement over time, come back and reflect on, make adjustments. And so really, the whole idea of this job-embedded professional development is really key to what we're doing and that it's really applicable. So we're, as we move forward, we want to make sure that we're continuing to offer the pathways, but I mean, people have said, well, gosh, if I'm doing these effective practices, I really need to know a lot about equity in order to make them culturally responsive. We're like, yes, they're not isolated. So they really blend, and people are really taking a look at these and, you know, and asking, how can I really apply this? And so we've developed the culture of inquiry, we've developed the culture of innovation. People have really appreciated the opportunity to say, look, we're going to do some action research on this because we want to know like what the impact is of what we're doing, which is part of Hattie's research. So as we move forward, one of the things we need to do is create next steps for the next round of pathways. And so like one of the things we're doing on the personalized learning front is, we're going to soon be identifying a, like a, kind of a, I don't know, sort of a steering committee for developing the next, the next three years of, for example, the highly effective practices pathway. Because we're not moving on to something else, but we need to grow and extend that. So that's kind of where we're going with this, we're kind of sticking to the course, but also progressing forward because we know we're not there yet. And I believe that's it. Any other comments you want to make about that? Okay. So thank you, but feel free to ask us any questions you may have.
Anybody? That was really good.
I have a question. This is kind of a detail, but this concept of authentic intellectual work really is intriguing, and I don't want to have to take a lot of time, so maybe to cut to the chase, could you give me an example of authentic versus an inauthentic type of intellectual work?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the audience of the work is a good example. So who the student is doing the work for. If the student is just doing the work for the teacher, that's not that authentic. If they're doing the work that is actually for someone else, for example, if it's for general publication, if it's for a specific cause that benefits back to the community, or if it's contributing to a larger body of work that can be used by others, those would be one indicator that it's authentic.
Solving a problem?
Yeah.
Okay. So that is part of the writing curriculum. Does that, is that concept being applied in other areas?
Yeah, the AIW teams are actually interdisciplinary teams. And so on each one, there's like social studies and math and language arts, so there's, they are multidisciplinary. And so, and that's actually an interesting thing because they've, people who have gone through it, at first, from what I've heard, I sat in on the launch forum, but I don't sit in on the meetings that happen every two weeks with everything. But Andrea Anderson and Brad Bruning, the instructional coaches at the high school, do actually go to all those, or some of, well, they're both, they both go to them, they don't both go to all of them, because some of them happen at the same time. But they shared that originally, people were like, well, you know, how would someone from a different department or different content area be able to give me help on this? But through the framework and the structure that they use to actually go through and look at the work, they found that it's actually really helpful to get an outside perspective on the work, sometimes because people can see their own content area very clearly, but not from the perspective of someone who's not familiar with it. So they're cross-disciplinary, which has come to be seen as a big benefit, which is really nice.
Thank you.
Going once, going twice. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to number two, superintendent's report. Brian?
Couple of quick items. This week, Tim Krista, Jane and I have an SRO meeting scheduled with the Village of Oregon, and I had tossed out a couple of dates for our parent meeting on what I'll call the SRO items, and those possibilities are November 5, 12, or 14. And I would like to offer them up at our meeting this week. While it will be an Oregon School District meeting, we are attempting to partner with the Oregon PD, and if one of those dates works better with Lieutenant Pagan cough, we'll try to get that set up, so I hopefully will have a firm date for you by the end of the week. Homecoming is in the books, and we had no rain for the parade. Hooray, hooray. If you had an opportunity to see the parade, it is a community event like none other in the Oregon School District. A little school construction update. Tomorrow is our tour at 4:30, so if you're meeting us at the site, please bring an older pair of shoes or boots, or your newer pair of shoes and boots will look older by the time the tour completes its, or by the time we complete it. I had an opportunity on the way out of town to stop at the site on Saturday morning with my wife, and I did not wash my car. Your car will see, will look like it's been on a school construction site as well. Last week, I had the opportunity to work with fellow superintendents on the Dane County Future Board Meeting for Equity. So we're excited about that possibility. We don't have a date or time, but the feedback that we received from all Dane County school districts was positive, that there was an interest in another board meeting. We are in Camp Gray season, and I'm going to try to get to Camp Gray for a little bit tomorrow to see our sixth graders. And if you've ever been there, you know that's just a lot of fun for our sixth graders, and a little on the hectic side, too, for us adults. And then lastly, I know you're familiar with the accidental bus fire that occurred over the last couple of weeks, and, you know, just to point out, our contractors are phenomenal individuals and people, and they share and share alike, and they help one another out when one contractor is in a jam. And of course, that happened again. And in spite of losing almost four buses, the, at around midnight the next morning, our bus routes ran on time because our contractors work together and share, and are great partners, and another great advantage for having the busing system that we have in the district. They're really focused on working for the betterment of our kids and our families and our communities, and our, and our greater communities. So what was tragic turned out to be, you know, no interruption of services. So thanks to all of our bus contractors for doing that. And that concludes my report, unless any of you have a specific question. All right, seeing none. Takes us to future agenda. We have a couple carrier overs from tonight, the boundary attendance area, and then our naming thing, and then Brian and I will work on putting together the agenda, so if anybody has anything they want to have added, let me know. We do have the tour tomorrow night, and we also have an expulsion hearing on Wednesday night, so it's busy board week, so.
Okay. Check out. Courtney? Troy? Anna?
Two very quick things. The first is, if you haven't had a chance to read your school news magazine, there are three articles featured in here, the first of which, that are Oregon-specific, the first of which, the headliner, Digging In, is written by one of our own teachers, Lisa Icke, a third-grade teacher at Netherwood. And then, our schools are also highlighted in the article on farm-to-school in Wisconsin, both Brooklyn Elementary and the Oregon District as a whole. So it was really awesome to read through this and see our school highlighted three separate times. I just was, that was so cool. And then I'll share another quick story. My son is learning about memoir writing in English, and he went up north for a youth hunt, and he got his first deer, and he was so excited, and he ran inside and he called me to say I wasn't with him, to tell me that he'd gotten this deer, and he said, Mom, I'm just, I'm just so excited, I'm going to write a memoir about this, and, and I just, it's just such a wonderful experience, and I have one more sensory detail to share with you. And I was like, okay bud, what's that? And he said, I could feel my heart pump in my eyes. And so I just thought I would share that story because he was so excited, and I need to remind him to write that memoir before he forgets that sensory detail. So that's all I have to share.
Barb? Tim? Krista?
Just one quick thing. I am the board representative on the district's Wellness Committee, and they're really doing some amazing work, so it might be something of future interest for the board to give an update from the Wellness Committee, and then also, the new food service director was there, and she is dynamite, and I think it would be great for the board to hear from her, too.
Great. Thanks for doing it. There's also a very scintillating article on Board Communications in that journal you might want to read. And my neighbor got a deer, too. My fifteen-year-old neighbor across the street, he got his first deer, too, and he was the same way. So we lent him our vacuum sealer, so I've got a promise of some venison from that. I will write a memoir about that. On Saturday, or, yeah, Saturday night, Nate Mendel, our PAC director, hosted the first of his concert series with Jane Powell, it was very well-attended. It was terrific show, and I think that's going to be a big success, based upon the feedback that I heard from the people who attended it. Really liked it, what he did with the lighting and the sound, and he was, it was pretty, pretty spectacular. It was, it was really fun. It was about an hour and a half long. Good attendance, not great, so it's a good start and room to fill. So with that, we'll see everybody tomorrow night, and then those of you at the expulsion on Wednesday, and then in two weeks for our board meeting. But until then, we'll need a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Post, we are adjourned at 9:18. Thanks, everyone.